All right, thank you, Brian. Welcome everyone to the January 25th, 2021 meeting. We're going to start with the mayor. Oh, there you are. I know you were out there somewhere. Mayor has some awards to hand out or to reiterate from the State of the City.
That is correct. Thank you guys for allowing me to come back up here. I know, thank you all again for tuning into the State of the City address on Zoom from Tuesday. The most important part of that address to me is the employee awards. And I wanted to make sure that everybody got to see the award winners face to face, or as best we can face to face. So I've invited all three award winners to come here tonight. Unfortunately, I believe Jujuwan is actually on, he may be on Zoom, he may not be.
I was basically trying to get him to zoom on the link that Jake's getting going.
Okay, so hopefully he's, Jujuwan, if you're on there?
I'm working with him to get on there now.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, well, for now, if I could get Chris Brown and Anthony Whittington to come up here, that would be great.
And again, thank you guys for allowing me to do this, but just want to say again, most of you guys heard the accolades that came from the department heads on Tuesday for what these three gentlemen have done for the city of Homewood in the last year. And we are just incredibly proud of them and glad to have them in the Homewood family. The firefighter of the year is Anthony Whittington. And then the, you can stand, you keep standing if you want to, it doesn't really matter. That's right, it's more dramatic that way, sure. And the police officer of the year, Mr. Chris Brown. And did we get Jujuwan Brooks on here?
Yeah, it looks like he got on.
He did get on?
He did, I don't know if he's, can do his audio or not, but he's there.
Okay, well, again, you're on, okay, well, Jujuwan, congratulations, the Homewood City 2020 Employee of the Year. And you guys are welcome to say a few words if you want, or if you want to just run, you're good. So, thank you.
Hi, Mayor.
Mr. President, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. And thank all three of our award winners for everything you do for the city. We very much appreciate it. All right, with that, we will call tonight's meeting to order. And we will start with an invocation by Dr. Bill Johnston from Dawson, followed by the pledge.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this evening, thank you for the opportunity to gather. We pray for our national state and these are local servants who give to us of their time and efforts and wisdom and guidance. And we just pray your blessings upon their gathering tonight and this gathering of our neighbors who come to gather in this place. Thank you for this means that we have as a city to work together and to handle issues of our city. We do thank you for our city and for these who have served us and employees of the year in these areas, we thank you for their service they give. And now, as we enter into this evening with all that goes on before us and with the dangers around us, with the COVID, and also with the weather that is upon us tonight, we just pray for wisdom, protection, and guidance upon all. And I pray this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Praise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Dr. Johnston. All right, Ms. Salter, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Presente.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Okay, everybody's here with Zoom. I also say you have a form.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from January 11th, 2021. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of those minutes that have previously been distributed.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's 11 to 0. All right, then we have some board vacancies for tonight. I believe we had HEC, which closed back on the 11th, and that we had some interviews for that position, is that right, Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, we did, we had a couple. And we were going to recommend Scott Rezick?
Scott Rezick.
For the at-large positions.
All right, so we have a motion for, or a nomination of Scott Rezick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I will let him know.
Thank you very much, Ms. Salter.
And we'd like to thank Dr. Julie Procti for her, she-
Because she's rolling off, correct?
She actually was eligible for a second term, but she said, due to some other commitments, she was happy that other people were stepping up, but she would still be very involved. So thank her for her time.
Fantastic. We will be happy to have her continued involvement even in the unofficial role. We also have the Arts Advisory Council, which closed on the 11th. Do we, do we have one applicant for that?
We just have one applicant.
Okay.
And Hannah Johnson, the chair of that committee, says they're still in process with the decision. She promises she'll have it by next council.
Okay. All right, so, but we only have one applicant for that position?
That's right.
All right. Then we will talk about that one. So are you ready to nominate that person, or are we holding off?
She, she would like to just have a discussion with, with the applicant.
No, no problem, that's perfectly fine, okay? Then we'll hold off until at least the next meeting for that. And then BZA closes today.
We got two candidates today, we got a second one today, so just have to schedule interviews whenever, that's Ward 4, probably?
Is it Ward 4 position?
It's Ward 4.
So I guess y'all have to wait, you know, we have, we have one candidate, and I think we got the second one today. But I did get an email that the resume I sent y'all was incorrect one, but she forwarded the one I got sent.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, and then we have some additions to the agenda. The first one actually is just an announcement on my behalf. It's relating to the city's city stormwater management program plan, which is posted on the website and available for public comment until January 31st, 2021. Wyatt Pugh has made sure that that's on the website and public comment is available for that until the end of this month. Other additions to the agenda, to the-
It'll be old business.
Old business. Old Business Agenda will be 030121, request for consideration to declare kitchen appliances from the old police department building surplus, brought to us by Chief Tim Ross. 040121, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Tyler Technologies for annual subscription to Crewforce Mobile Data Terminal Software, brought to us by Chief Hill, Battalion Chief Broadhead from the Fire Department. 050121, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Pitney Bowes for new postage machine at the Court Department in the Public Safety Building, brought to us by John Morgan, our municipal court administrator. 110820, request for consideration for additional street lighting and address traffic, and to address traffic concerns in Forest Brook Drive and Delkris. And then that is it for the Old Business Agenda. We also have one addition to the Committee Referral Agenda, that'll be 150121, request for consideration of placing an ad in the Homewood Chamber of Commerce magazine, brought to us by Counselor Smith. And with that, I think, Ms. Salter, have I covered everything?
Yes, sir, I just think I left, at least I took off on my place, I just needed you to get that get ready.
Okay, no, no problem, I just wanted to make sure I'd covered everything so far, okay? All right, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. So moved. Second. Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
That is also 11 to 0. All right, we don't have anything on the consent agenda, so we will move on to the Old Business Agenda. And the first item is 131120, public hearing that was opened on January 11th, 2021, and continued for consideration to rezone a property at 2510 18th Street South from C2, Neighborhood Shopping District to R7, attached dwelling unit district. The applicant, brought to us by the applicant and owner, Gold Nugget LLC, to permit the construction of an eight-unit townhouse development. The planning commission voted eight to zero with a favorable recommendation in favor of the rezone. All right, so we started this on the 11th, and we left the public hearing open because we were having technical issues with Zoom that night. So we are back to it with the public hearing still open, and we will take public comment on that. Young, come on up. I'm going to make a couple of statements first. Just, we've gotten a number of emails from, I think everyone has gotten a number of emails, both in favor and opposed to this project. We have, those will be submitted as part of the record, Ms. Salter is aware of those, and has been, they've been included, she's been included on the distribution of those, so those will be included in the record. So just as a reminder for what, what is actually before us, the land we're talking about is on 18th Street, up near, up on the way to Vulcan. The land is privately owned by the applicant. The land is currently zoned C2, or commercial. The applicant has applied for a rezoning of R7, which is multifamily residential. The issue before us is whether or not R7 is appropriate for this property. That's, that's the only issue before the city tonight, is whether it relates to the rezoning and whether or not it's, it's proper. And we will continue to take comments on that issue, just as we did last, or two weeks ago, as well as in the emails. And we look forward to hearing everyone's opinion on it. I will say, just not, we're going to do this with some public, we've had some public hearings where we've had reactions from the crowd to people talking, and we, we do want to avoid that. Please, no good, bad approval, disapproval of people talking. We want, we want everyone to be heard and be heard without, without any kind of reaction. So if everyone will please keep to that. So with that, Mr. Abernathy? Who is the applicant? Mr. Jones, do you have something before we get started?
I was just wondering, Mr. President, are you, is there going to be a limit on people speaking, a time limit, or?
Yeah, I, I don't know how many people, I guess we may have a lot on Zoom, so I probably will go ahead and limit this to three minutes for each comment. Mr. Abernathy, you, you as the applicant will-
I won't need more than three.
You won't, you may not need three minutes, but, because you've already presented to us once, but as the applicant, you will be exempted from that, but everyone else will have three minutes.
And President Wyatt, I did want to say, I noted on your copy, but not for the public, that we did already have a first read on that. So if y'all take action, we don't have to have unanimous consent, we just can vote for it, because we did have a first read on the 11th.
Okay.
Which is somewhat different than-
Yes, thank you.
John Abernathy, 303 Ascot Road, and here representing Gold Nugget LLC. Two primary things I wanted to say, number one, I'm, I'm here and available as applicant to answer any questions, did not intend to present the whole presentation again, so here and available for anything that may come up, if you have questions for us. And then secondly, there was a request last week to have a call, or a meeting actually, with Rosedale, and Doug Clapp organized that, and we ended up, he, they ended up wanting to do it as a Zoom call, which is what we did, and there were several council people available, Ms. Gier, Mr. Sims, Mr. Gualtney, there may have been more, sorry, I saw all of you, but I couldn't tell if there were more on Zoom. There were certainly 10 or 15 people at least on Zoom. And I just wanted to say, we felt like it went really well. Obviously, people may come up and speak and give their opinion, but we felt it went really well, went for just over an hour, there were a lot of comments, questions asked, we answered as many as we could, a lot of it pertained to just Rosedale in general, not necessarily our project, but it was good to hear what everyone had to say. We presented the project, and thought it was very cordial, thought a lot of good things were discussed, and so I thought it was very productive, so I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate you doing that meeting. All right, anyone else here in the chambers that would like to speak? You can come on up.
If you might just sign in on that sheet that has comments from the public? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Again, my name is Pastor Byron White. I'm a resident of Rosedale, 1822 26th Avenue South, here in Homewood, which is considered, again, Birmingham. I'm here to speak as a resident, as I stated before, I am one that is against this rezoning. And my reason for, one, this being against the rezoning, for this not going to residential. We did have a conversation with the developer and the owner of the property, and we asked questions. Some of the questions were to satisfaction, in my opinion, some wasn't. In those questions, he did state and showed us again the plan, same thing as he showed here in Homewood. But again, property tax was an issue, that if this is allowed and to be built, will our property tax go back up, or will our property tax go up? And I do understand that when there's improvement in the neighborhood, and when there's improvement in your area, meaning, take for example, President Wyatt, my house, if I build my house next to you, and my house is a little bit bigger, or it costs a little bit more than when I registered my house at the county, that's going to make a difference on the tax, if my house costs more than that one. Since I've been here, my neighbors two houses down have and did improvements the same time I did, and our tax doubled within the next year. So this, again, and I ask this question, if we do this, we have residents that have been there 30, 40, 50 years, house may be paid for, or that are elderly, then once you, if you allow and approve this, that their taxes go up to where now they can't afford their taxes, so now they are pushed, or maybe forced out of their residence. So that was another reason we, I was against it, too. I asked if, God forbid, if something happens, and if a fire was to be there, can a fire truck get into this property? And I didn't see how a fire truck can get in there, because from what he told us, each residence would be only allowed two parking spaces, so that meant that the space was limited. So if you're only limited to two parking spaces, and not even enough for a guest to come in, I know a fire truck can't come in there if something happens in that development. Again, and if that was to happen, that means 18th Street is totally shut down to the oncoming, oncoming traffic and outgoing traffic. It's already a traffic jam there now, in the morning, when I take my son to school, in the evening time, going to pick him up, you know, that's a, is that my time?
That's loud.
So that's, that's a, that's another issue there, of them coming in, coming out. So if it's hard for us to go into the drugstores, CVS, or just going in, coming back to the schooling, I feel that this is going to be another traffic issue there with whoever stays there.
Thank you, Pastor White, you're very quickly, very quickly.
One last comment, my last, three, when we asked, as far as in reference of the costly, they're still trying to be for affordable housing for the Rosedale residents, this is not, again, for affordable housing. $3,000 a month, that wouldn't be, and when we asked about that, the answer was, we wasn't really billing this for Homewood residents, they was looking for someone else. So that, again, made me take note that they wasn't in consideration of our thoughts there in Rosedale. Thank you for-
Thank you, Pastor White. Is there anyone else present in the chamber that wishes to speak for or against this?
Hi. My name's Paul Harbin, and I'm a property owner. I own 2539 Central Avenue, which is the house adjacent to Spring Park, only remaining house that's, that's there on that side, so. And I really just have a few questions, and there's some of these things that I might just need guidance as to where to find out information. So the first question is, would it be possible, and this is to the developer, would it be possible to get a summary of the meeting that was had with the Rosedale residents, so we could figure out?
Well, yeah, I think, I think that if you have any questions that you'd like to ask, he'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Well, my question is, what, what was discussed in that, and what, what was good? It was presented that that was a good meeting with some positive information. What was the information that came out of that meeting? What, what did he learn relative to, so?
Well-
And I don't know if that's something that-
Yeah, I think you can talk to him about that, we've only got, you know, a couple minutes for yours, so I want to make sure we're getting what information you need from us.
Yeah, no problem, and that was, I just wanted to bring that up, so that as, as council members, you're also maybe delving into, hey, we had a productive meeting, what was that? So maybe something that could be of value to you to find out as well. The second is curiosity, and I guess I can find this out later as well, is it how this would impact the potential for the trail, and I believe y'all presented something, but maybe the sound wasn't working?
Correct. There, there's an Apple study that's been done regarding the trail. It would not be part of, this property would not be part of it, because it's not city property, it's private property, but the trail could, depending on how it ends, all ends up working out, there is some city land adjacent along the creek that might, or might not be able to be used.
Right, and that's part of my land as well, so just curious if this impacts that.
It, this, this property should not impact what is done with it, one way or the other.
Perfect. And then last is that one of the city council members, and I believe it may have been Jennifer Andrews, who I don't think is here.
She's on Zoom.
Oh, so Jennifer.
I'm here.
And I apologize if it wasn't you, but I, somebody had mentioned when this was first brought up, that this was, that we're sort of excited about this new project, because it was filling a missing need, that we have a missing housing need that we don't have at this time in Homewood. And my question is, what is that housing need that was missing that we're filling?
Sure, so I was referencing a conversation that I had had back in the summer with Louis Niket, who is one of my Ward 5 residents, and local architect, well-known, nationally renowned architect, and his discussion with me was about sort of the townhome, smaller package of housing. This is something that would impact, would not impact the school system, gives people that, for example, live in Ward 5, that are ready to maybe leave the bigger properties and stay within Homewood, an option. And specifically, I was referring to the number of units, that it was only eight units, and as I said, you know, targeted more towards somebody who's in their retirement age, wanting to stay in Homewood, but not stay in their big home, for example, Ward 5. So I was speaking directly to conversations that I've had in my ward, and, you know, happy to clarify any further, but that's where that was coming from.
Okay, thank you. And that, just, and my response is, just a person from coming out of, I've owned the house for 15 years in Rosedale, is that I feel like the missing need that we have is affordable housing at this point, and I don't think that this really addresses that. I think there's a lot of unaffordable housing throughout the city of Homewood, and if we're looking to fill niches, that hopefully at some point we'll find ways to provide a, you know, a greater amount of affordable housing, so that the people, not who are, already have something in Homewood that want to downsize, but the people who perhaps live in Homewood and want to stay in Homewood at an affordable way, without getting pushed out. Thank you very much, so, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Anybody else present here tonight that would like to speak? All right, do we have anyone, Brian, do we have anyone on Zoom that wants to speak?
We have quite a few people. We're going to need to figure out how you want to manage this. We can call them by name, you can have them raise their hand, and we can go one by one through that. Probably easiest right now, folks online, you can either raise your hand, or if you want to put your name that is displayed in the chat function, then we can call on you one on, one by one. Alex, if you want, I can just call on them one by one, it's up to you.
That sounds good.
Okay. We'll give it a couple minutes here. Again, raise your hand if you would like to speak, or you can put your name in the chat.
Yeah, Brian, will you give us their name as, as you're-
Yes, I will. Or at least I'll give you what they have put in, some of them, it's only first name, but I'll, I'll give you what they have. Okay, Jenny Phillips.
All right.
You can go ahead and unmute.
Mr. Phillips-
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, Ms. Phillips, if you will also give us your address, please.
Sure, my address is 93 Windsor Drive in Homewood.
Thank you very much, you got three minutes.
Okay, great, I don't think I'll need that much time, because I didn't really come prepared for anything, but after listening, I'm a third grade teacher at Shades Kahaba, I'm actually in my classroom right now, because I was working late. But I'm just here to really second what the last gentleman just said about affordable housing. I think a part of what makes Homewood amazing is our diversity, and we say that a lot over and over, but I think we kind of need to put our money where our mouths are, in terms of really supporting our Rosedale community. I think they're a huge asset to us, and I also think that we really need to provide more affordable housing to the residents there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Phillips, who's next, Brian?
So far, nobody else, but I do have some comments. We'll give it a couple more minutes, and then I'll read to you, just, we have three comments, but they're short. Wait, one just popped up. Hey, Carrie Powell, you can go ahead and unmute.
All right, Ms. Powell, if you will give us your address.
Hey there, hey, I think actually Jean Merchant was before me. Was that, we just went?
She, she just commented. Jean, but Jean, if you would like to speak, you can.
Jean.
Yeah, but Carrie, you can go first.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, it's Carrie, hi, I just wanted to-
Wait, 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 Carrie, Carrie, real quick.
Yep.
Since we're kind of going back and forth between people, we need to make sure we know who's talking. So Carrie, if you, if you'll give your full name and your address, please.
Sure, yeah, it's Carrie Swenson Powell, I'm at 406 Edgewood Boulevard.
Thank you very much.
Hey, yeah, I appreciate you all being here and opening this up to the community. I think that, you know, the affected neighborhood at this time is Rosedale, and I think that historically, we as a community have been pretty bad about listening and following the lead of folks in Hom, in Rosedale. And I think since our track record is that, you know, Homewood has infringed on Rosedale and has overtaken 70% of the, you know, the land that used to be designated to Rosedale, that, you know, when, when the community comes together and says, no, we don't want this there, even if you don't agree with that, I think if you don't live in the community, maybe, you know, their opinions should be put before, before people who don't live there. So I think we should just listen to what they're saying, and if they don't want their property prices to go up, or, you know, their taxes to go up, or, you know, feel like they're being gentrified- their taxes to go up, or, you know, feel like they're being gentrified and being forced to move out, move out, that, you know, the home prices are exploding all around them, and it's forcing a lot of people to relocate. We should really, really be sensitive to those, to those needs and follow what they're saying. So I oppose the new development.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Powell, Ms. Merchant, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Jean Merchant, and I live at 936 Shades Glen Drive. I just absolutely agree with everyone who's spoken thus far. Twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars is just a tremendous amount per month. It's a, it's a, it's a huge mismatch from what most people's mortgages are there and the rental properties that are close by. And so, I, I agree totally with what Carrie just said, that I don't even think we should, we should consider doing this if the residents of Rosedale say no. They should have the ultimate say, and my understanding is that they are not in favor of this development as it goes. So, I, I would like to say, I think we need more town homes. We need more multifamily housing. We need to think beyond R1 absolutely everywhere. But this particular development does not sound like it's the right thing for Homewood or for Rosedale.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Merchant. Who we got next, Brian?
Evan Bates.
All right, Mr. Bates, if you will give us your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Evan Bates. I'm at 1768 Woodbine Drive, Homewood, Alabama 35216. And y'all heard my spiel last week, or last meeting. All, all I'm gonna add to what I said was, the, the council, city council in 2007 worked with the Rosedale residents to come up with a strategic plan for how the city would support the revitalization of Rosedale. The city council approved it, and, again, regardless of the vote tonight, we, we passed it, we approved it, we, we put our names to it, and, and we need to honor our word. And it talks about, you know, not rezoning, revitalization of housing, owner occupied housing, you know, creating more affordable housing. Those are the things that the, that the city and the community got together and agreed on. And, and it just seems like in the discussion, the agreements that we've all made have been lost. And I would just ask that regardless of the outcome tonight, that we take the time to come back and revisit that, and, and have that front and center as we look at priorities, as we look at spending park funds, as we look at the way we rezone. That's all I had to say tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Who's next, Brian?
At this time, there's been nobody else who has put their name in to speak. One more chance. I will tell you, we've had about five comments. All of them have agreed with the same thing about the affordable housing. I can read them if you'd like, but that's the gist.
He, yeah, I think, Brian, will you give us the names of those people for the record?
I will. Let's see. Carolyn Herr said she sent her comments via email. Flatria said typically when you are at retirement age, you are looking for one-story homes without stairs. Connie Kohler says, don't want to speak, but agree with others on affordable housing. Alexis says, I agree that we need affordable housing and that older people prefer homes without stairs. Also to clarify, three thousand dollars a month is not affordable. Marquita C., I have lived in Edgewood since 1997, 206 Theta Street. I am in favor of supporting a Rosedale neighbor, neighbors, and I agree with Evan, Carrie, and Jenny. Flatria just added one more. I oppose the new development. I live in Rosedale and believe that it needs revitalization in that area. I do not agree with three thousand dollar town homes. It would have been nice if we would have had a voice in the say beforehand. You have people in the Rosedale community that are willing to help change the look of the, of the area. We just need to work together and treat Rosedale as a part of Homewood. And one last one, Megan Cheek, I'd love for us to take a serious look at affordable housing. Thanks. And I'm sorry, one more was just added. Barbara Wheeler, are we trying to gentrify Rosedale? What do we want to do for this community? How do we take care of that area in a way that helps and does not hurt that area?
Okay, Brian, with that one, we're, we're gonna cut off the comments. If anyone else wants to get on to speak, I'm happy to have them speak, but we're gonna cut off the comments portion. Right. And, and Brian, can you, can you just take a screenshot or something?
I'm gonna save that. I'll save that for the record, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Because we do want to list those names. Mr. Abernathy, do, do you have something you want to add? I know, you, you can follow up on, on the issues that were raised.
John Abernathy, 303 Ascot Road. I just wanted, hearing the comments, just wanted to make two quick comments. I wanted to note that it wasn't unanimously in one way or the other on our call. In fact, we, one of the residents on the call, a 12-year resident, asked for a follow-up call with me today, which we had, and he, I believe afterwards, sent the council a recommendation for approval. So, there were, I think there were a lot of people like Doug Clapp, who's not here tonight, not sure what he thought, but there were a lot of people on the call that did get answers to their questions and did not come for whatever reason tonight as well. And then I wanted to note, I am not as familiar, but I know the historic preservation and revitalization plan for Rosedale is brought up a lot. And I just wanted to note, there were several things that I saw in here that are exactly what we're doing here tonight in the request. One was buffer Rosedale single family residential areas from incompatible commercial activity. And I believe that's exactly what's being requested here, is to take a commercial activity and turn it into a buffer. The second was encourage appropriate mixed use and traditional, and transitional development in existing commercial areas, which is exactly what this is. It's a transitional area. So I just wanted to note that several of the things, and seven stated goals that were called out in the plan that's been referenced several times are exactly what this request is. Thank you. Yeah, but the comment on the, I believe on the call was, how would a fire truck do it? And, and then because they couldn't pull in the rear, right or wrong, our answer was, in the residential subdivisions of Homewood, now fire trucks can't pull through people's backyard. No one can pull through my backyard. So they stopped on the street. In fact, my neighbor across the street had a fire, and they stopped on the street and blocked the street and serviced the fire. So, the comment was, I'm not sure if they can make that turn or what they can do. I'm not as familiar with the fire truck turning radius, but if they had to, it would be no different than our residential neighborhoods where they do have to stop on the street, even Hollywood Boulevard to service fires.
And, and Mr. Jones, I don't think you were here last meeting. Mr. Abernathy, correct me if I'm wrong. Y'all made a change to your project in order to address the fire concerns? Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct. We had eight units together. And so the request was to break it in half so that someone could walk between the units with a fire hose or otherwise. And so that's when we broke it into two four-unit buildings. I believe the fire marshal requested that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Jessica Peoples. I've never done this before, so...
You're fine. Just give us your address and, and sign in at some point.
Okay. 1602 25th Terrace South in Rosedale. I'm a Rosedale resident. I bought my house in 2004 there. My kids have gone to Homewood, and I want to be another face for you to think about Rosedale residents and what we want, what we have to say, and that's why I'm here. That's all.
Thank you very much. All right. I don't see that there is anybody else. So with that, we will close the public hearing.
What, I am shaking. I don't...
You're okay, Jessica. Wait, is, is your opinion in favor or against the project?
In favor of, in favor of supporting Rosedale residents and what they want, and sounds like what they want. And what we want is to know the benefits to Rosedale and, not for it. I'm sorry, not for it. I misspoke.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing, and we will move to, we've already had the first reading from last week. So we won't need to do that. So we'll go into comments and questions by the council.
Do you have a question for the agent again?
For the developer?
For the developer, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One question was, you know, Mr. Harbin asked about a summary of the meeting with residents, and, you know, some of the questions that kind of seemed still open-ended related to the height of the structure, as far as it impeding their, their view. Also, there were concerns about the left turn onto 18th out of the property, as well as a number of concerns about, again, the, the raising of property taxes, as well as surrounding, surrounding values in the way that may impact their ability to, you know, stay in place. So I just wondered, are there any follow-up to those questions that was provided?
Yes. That's okay.
You may have to repeat them. We, we did our best in that call.
Sure.
But I can repeat what our answers were.
Okay. There were just a couple of things that kind of seemed a little bit open-ended from that meeting that I just want to follow. So one was the, the height of the structure and a concern about basically people's view, residents' view being impaired, you know, compared to like the current, the, the current status. Another was...
Can I address them one at a time? Do you mind?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the question was, and could, could you stand in the Rosedale neighborhood and see what you see now? And I think the question was from, don't remember across the street, but it was back behind the property. And as you know, there's a hillside that comes up and then back down. And we got on Google Aerial while we were on the call, and I think we all saw the hillside and couldn't see any houses from the street. So we weren't sure exactly whether an allowed height, I think we were 35 feet is the allowed height, you could see the top, but we knew there was a big hillside that went up and went over to the neighborhood. So it looked like if something was impaired, it would be across, it would be the view across 18th to the rock wall that's across the street. But no one would have an impaired view towards Vulcan or downtown. That's my memory.
And I was only on the call from a, on my phone, so that's probably why I didn't see anything that was pulled up. So my apologies. Thanks for that.
I, I think everyone was satisfied after we discussed that.
And then, there was also a lot of concern about potentially a left turn onto 18th out of the property. Was that addressed?
The question was, one person thought that if someone turned left onto 18th Street, it would be dangerous. You know, the, I can't speak to their opinion. I mean, ours was different in that you do have sightline views north and south on 18th Street. And so, that, that turn is allowed today, not only from this property, but across the street and Birmingham Properties. You can, you can turn left and right coming out. There's a, there's nothing blocking you. There's no median between. So, one person expressed, they thought it was a dangerous move. Yeah.
And then the final thing was just one that I think we've already discussed. I don't, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts, but the concern about the increase of property values in surrounding area, that concern that that may displace
Right.
current residents prohibit future residents from coming in, you know, if that's, at, basically the current value of those properties.
We gave our opinion. I mean, we're no expert in that. I mean, we all see Jefferson County increasing all of our taxes. It's changed it over the last year or two. They've gone up without anything happening on all the properties. So, we're no expert, but our, we only gave our opinion to that question, which was, we don't see investment in one parcel, but certainly that goes up. But we have not seen traditionally arbitrarily, they go to the other properties and raise all their taxes because someone invested in their home on one side. So, we didn't see where that would be an issue as much as the issue of just the appraisal and assessment values that Jefferson County keeps doing, which we have no control over. Again, we're, we're not an expert, but I guess we didn't initially see that, that issue.
No, thanks. I mean, I, I think that that's, I mean, thank you again for having the meeting with the community. I think, I think it's, you know, the emphasis is on us to, you know, to really weigh those decisions as a concern, listening to the residents and, and, you know, also in conjunction with you in collaboration. So thank you.
Yeah.
I do have a question.
I'll stay.
Is this an all, all or nothing venture for you guys? Meaning, you know, is it this project or commercial? I mean, I keep hearing that, you know, that's the best suited project for the lot and the best thing for, you know, what you guys want to do. But I'm hearing it's either that, or we could put something commercial there. Is, is there anything, other projects that have, that you've thought about to coincide with some of the concerns that would make it a different project, residential?
We looked at other residential zonings, and we could never figure out because of the, you know, the limited depth and the parking requirements. We could never figure out how to do any other type of residential there. That's why we went to the very thin town home with parking underneath. It was almost the only thing that would fit. So from a residential standpoint, this is all we could come up with. I'm sure there's other uses, but if we couldn't get this, we didn't see any other residential. We would just stay with the commercial zoning and work under that. Again, that's not our desire, but we would just stay with that and attempt to develop something under that commercial zoning.
And then also with the, with the value as far as the, the rent for that property?
What, just commenting on that?
Is there any other consideration for a different price point?
We would like the rent to be as low as possible, gets as many candidates have the opportunity to rent as possible. It's totally set off the, the construction cost. I mean, as you know, lumber's up 50% in the last year. It's up almost 15% in the last quarter, which these buildings are usually built out of lumber. So, it's a little bit of the construction costs and material costs that dictate. We just throw all the cost in a bucket and then look at, you know, what's an acceptable return that we can get financed by a bank. And that sort of sets the rate. The lower the rate, the better for us. And so I guess that's all I can say. We, we would love to, to do better there as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Gere, did you have a?
I, I do. Yes, hi. So, kind of along those same lines, let's say, let's just say we turn down the rezone. Would you consider, would, would you consider meeting with groups of council people, residents? I mean, there are a lot of residents who are saying they're opposed. Would you be opposed to looking at different options that might be more in align with what some of the neighbor, in the neighborhood could, could consider? And I know you probably don't want to go too far down that path, but, you know, that's a question that I have that I think is important to understand.
Yeah. And, and I'm a development partner, obviously. The landowners would have to also speak to that. We've joined together to develop the project, but they are the owners as well. And the reason we got together is they decided they wanted to develop a project. And so we started down the commercial path. It's sat there obviously a long time that they've owned it. We'd started down that path and decided together to do this as kind of the least intensive and most appropriate use, we felt like. I can't speak for them whether they'd be willing to meet and come up with something else. As a development per, side, we haven't come up with really anything else that makes sense. And so...
Okay, well, from the...
It's difficult. It's difficult to say, and I can't speak for them, but I know that their desire is to develop it, and there are commercial options and interest. It's just not, again, our personal opinion was it's not best.
Well, and some of those might, the, the neighborhood might prefer some of those other things if we ask. I'm, I'm not sure, but they might. And I don't, I don't really...
Let me interrupt you real quick, Ms. Gere, just to make sure we're staying on the same page. If those things were to happen, that would have to come about through a different application. So we've got to decide, just so we're all clear, we have to decide this issue tonight, and that would have to come, we couldn't morph this into that. This is the owner's application that they've made and it's gone through that process.
That's great. That's great. Well, and I have a few more general comments.
We couldn't commit to anything different at this point. I don't, I don't speak for that.
This is really about a rezone. It's really not about exactly what's going to be built there.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Abernathy, but I do have some more general comments.
Sure. Well, why don't we see if we, anyone's got any more questions for him, and then we'll move on to that.
Sure. Well, why don't we see if we, anyone's got any more questions for him and then we'll move on to that. Anybody got any more questions for Mr. Abernathy? All right.
Thank you.
Famous last words. Ms. Gere, you can go ahead with your comments.
Okay. So, you know, just in general, I think this issue of rezoning, it's one of the most serious considerations that council has in terms of, um, direction of our city for planning and development. And I also think it's one of the most important and impactful decisions that we have related to neighborhoods. And in this case, um, our, our neighborhood that we're considering is Rosedale. And Rosedale residents have come to us, they've talked to us, and they're generally opposed to this rezone. They've given us lots of reasons. And, you know, uh, we, we've gone through those tonight, so I won't review those. But I, I did sit in on the meeting with the property owner and the developer. And I know that the residents understand that something needs to happen on this property, and I agree with them. I think the question is just what needs to happen. So I've spent some time reviewing Rosedale historical documents. They have asked the city for years and years to listen to them, to ask them when we are, when we're considering things that directly affect the neighborhood and their community. And I think that that's what so many of our residents on the calls tonight are asking us as a governing body is to please consider what Rosedale desires. So in general, I think that if we, um, I'd like us to slow down on this rezone. I don't, this property has sat empty for over a decade in this state. And I think, given the fact that Rosedale is opposed to the rezone and many of our own, uh, city residents are opposed to the rezone and want us to listen to what Rosedale has to say, I'd like to see us just, um, slow down, reconsider, and potentially go back and work with the property owner or, you know, whatever the next steps might be to reconsider, uh, this, this request. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else have any comments?
Hey, Alex, I'll weigh in from the planning commission.
Yeah.
And I have already put, voted on this based on being on the planning commission. That was back in November. First, it came out of the BZA. Um, I think it took two times to come out of the BZA, but the second time it came out unanimous with a one-foot setback variance. And then came to the planning commission, uh, it was approved eight to zero, um, back in November, including Chief Nick Hill, who had some comments about the access to the fire trucks and the project was amended to support that. My vote of yes was for several reasons. Number one, um, it's a less intense zoning. Anytime in my mind that you could take commercial and go down to residential, um, is an improvement. I personally don't want to see a car wash there. I don't want to see a gas station there. This is the, um, entryway to our city. And I have spent a good deal of time at Birmingham City Council, working with them, opposing the storage unit that got put at the northeast corner of that intersection, the closest intersection. If you look at that corner and the gas station that's there and the empty restaurant that's there, that could be sitting at this asphalt lot that's been empty for the better part of twenty years. Um, and I, in my opinion, I, I don't think that's a good fit for the entryway to our city. I like the, the residential as you're coming up the mountain, as you're approaching Vulcan and there's residential on the west side of that street. I think it looks great. And as Counselor Wolden and I discussed today at four-thirty, you know, we have done a study to do a greenway connecting to that. Eventually, all that area will be connected, and that's going to be wonderful for everybody. And, um, as far as property tax goes, we did discuss it with our finance director and our assistant finance director. And quote, "The townhouse development will have no effect on Rosedale property taxes." In fact, the opposite is true. If it is developed into a successful commercial development, it would drive up the property value and possibly increase it for surrounding properties. But in this case, no effect at all. So that is, uh, the reasoning that, the vote that I took back in November, um, you know, again, anytime you could take a less intense zoning, um, is a benefit to the city. Uh, again, and I'm just sorry to say that I just do not want to see a gas station or, or a car wash or another drugstore or anything. I think it makes a nice transitional, I think it's, it's what's called transitional as you transition into our downtown area. And, um, as far as Ward Five residents that I have heard from, I have heard from, uh, one that was, that did not approve, but everyone else I heard from did approve and thought it was a nice project. And again, would look towards, that would be something that, that folks in Ward Five would look towards for retirement. So those are my comments.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Andrus. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'll second those comments. The O-seven plan, um, was really a, I mean, in, in terms of what the overall point of that plan was to provide buffers and where we could stay with residential or rezone to residential from commercial because of the commercial encroachment on the neighborhood. So that, that was the O-seven plan. And in looking at this property, um, we're really doing what that plan stated. We're going to residential. Uh, I looked at the buffer and there's a large buffer, um, behind the property. And then on the other side, you've got a cliff, you know, so you, you're, you're insulated there. So I, I don't see it as an encroachment. I see it as a positive thing, uh, having residential. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't do what Ms. Gere is suggesting. We can, we can continue to have meetings with residents and, and find out what, what they want. But I, the, the overall message was clear to me that we need to limit as much commercial as possible and move to residential. And I, I'm, I'm for this plan with the eight to zero recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I just want to say briefly, you know, most of the, this is, I've only been on council for a few months, a couple of months. And this is by far the, uh, the issue has brought about the most emails and messages. And everything I received was eighty percent against this project. And I, I understand, um, Counselor Jones' points about what the O-seven plan was and the, some of the favorable aspects of the plan. But I think this also speaks to an appetite within our city to have some sort of consideration and thought into what housing looks like and that not all residential is, is created the same. And, and so just to keep that, whatever happens today. Because this is a bigger issue than just this particular rezoning. And I appreciate everyone's comments, whether they were for or against the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Alamon. Anybody else?
I would just like briefly to say, um, I, I think because I was on the other side of this in a different part of the neighborhood where the neighbors actually fought to keep an R-seven zoning as opposed to rezoning to commercial. They, and people said, "Are you sure you want townhouses next to your houses?" And they were to a person. Much preferred the idea of an R-seven zoning next to their residential neighborhood than, than go into a commercial even with all the restrictions that were going to be put on that commercial property. Because their fear was, this is going to become a gas station. This is going to become, some, somewhere down the road, when nobody remembers all the things that we've put in place, we do not want a convenience store next to our backyard. And so I, I think in the world of zoning, anytime you can take a piece of commercial property and zone it residential, it is such, so much less impact on the surrounding area in terms of traffic, in terms of noise. I would not want to live near a gas station with cars coming in and out constantly and if the traffic isn't concerned, cars coming in and out of a gas station all day long and all night long. I, I think that's a much higher percentage of traffic increase than a eight-unit townhome development. Also, I feel like lights, I mean, I just feel like there's so many things that are more impactful negatively with a commercial development than with a residential. So I, I have to say, I've been flummoxed a little bit by this. I certainly don't disrespect any of the comments of the neighborhoods that the neighbors in Rosedale. I've delivered meals and wheels in Rosedale for years. I love the people there. I just, in my head, I don't understand how a commercial property being on that spot is more advantageous to the neighborhood than a residential. I, I, I can't, I can't wrap my brain around it. And that's just where I am right now.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else? Mr. Harden?
I'm, I guess where Ms. Smith is, it's been hard to hear all the comments and think that I think so differently, which is we're downzoning a property from commercial to residential. And we did get this big fight last year over the opposite of that. But I think the other thing that no one's talking about is how difficult this site is. From what I've heard over the years, it is a very, very difficult site to develop. Mr. Abernathy, most people probably don't know, but he's really a big, huge, commercial developer kind of guy. He's coming in to do a project like this. I'm not sure why. But, um, it's not going to be easy whoever takes that property on. It is really tough property. And if we've got somebody who's willing to come in and take that on and do what I thought was a beautiful project, it's, and, and we're taking it from commercial to residential. And yet, I know the biggest concern of the Rosedale residents was the taxes going up. And I'm not a hundred percent convinced that's true. We don't really know. All our taxes went up last year. But, um, I just think we've got this ti- chance for a, a really beautiful project to come along. And if it doesn't, I'm not sure what the next move is. That property is sat there for a long time. It's because it's so tough of a property to develop.
Yeah, Ms. Smith?
The other thing that I considered today was the environmental impact. I know somebody had mentioned, I think in one of the emails they sent to me about the environmental impact of the construction of a retail project. And then I thought, what's the environmental impact of a gas station going there? And digging tanks in the ground, um, in that location next to the creek? So I, I'm also concerned about that in terms of the commercial developments that might happen there. Because the last thing I remember being there was a veggie stand, um, which had very little impact on anything. Because it was just a building with some plants in it. But, um, that's, that's also a concern that I've had in terms of what a commercial development might be to that spot.
Okay.
One more comment about that. So the veggie stand, the fruit stand was actually, uh, utilized by the neighborhood. And, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's currently a neighborhood shopping district. And we talk about it in the, in the way that it's commercial, but it can be certainly low-impact commercial and something that's useful to the neighborhood. It doesn't have to be a gas station or a car wash. That's, that's, those are the two other options that have been mentioned through the, through this process. But there are a lot of other things that, uh, could go into a neighborhood shopping district zone. And I think until you talk to the neighbors about how they might envision it, it's not something that, you know, us sitting here can really understand what, what they might prefer to have adjacent to their, adjacent to their neighborhood.
I do agree with that. And I, and I love the veggie stand. I shop there all the time. I stop there quite a bit. My problem is, I don't think, I mean, this is a, this is going to be a private development by a group that I'm assuming wants to make some return on their investment. I don't think there's ever going to be a consideration that they're going to put a veggie stand back there. I mean, I may be wrong. They might have that absolute plan, but I, I don't see that being what this private development group is planning on doing. My guess is whatever they do, they would like to maximize the return on their investment for whatever that is, whether it's commercial or residential. So, I mean-
I think that after seeing the greenway plan today, the city should buy the property and we should put the greenway right through it, but I'll stop it there.
Well, well, assuming the property's not for sale, that might be tough, but. All right, Mr. Sims?
Thanks. And really, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on one thing Ms. Counselor Gere was saying. I was just looking at C-two myself and I just want to let y'all know, I mean, as we were talking about this, we keep saying gas station, but things you could be saying are art, art supply store, dance studio, florist, part, you know, other, other options other than a gas store, gas station, maybe neighborhood market, you know? Now granted, we want to, we want to reduce any potential impact. So gas station would be the one that we think from a traffic standpoint, environmental standpoint, would be most problematic. And I, and I honestly agree with y'all there. But I do have concerns about, you know, not pausing to hear, um, you know, not taking the time to see what we could do with a plan for this property. Because we owe that, because this is a historic community where we have, you know, we have a huge burden here to protect that and, and the desires of the residents. And so I've really, you know, that, as a new counselor, digesting some of this new information that comes in with a plan, I think that that's really important for me to always listen to the public and have a collaborative conversation, even if that means slowing things down, even if we end up in the same place. Because I think that's most important, that we always value the residents who are, you know, closest to the, to the property where it's going to be impacted. And, and that's what's weighed a lot on me. In addition to, um, just when we talk about multifamily or townhomes, we talk about a lot, if it's, we make it permissible and justify the cases sometimes when the rent's a lot and it won't impact our school district by increasing enrollment. And I'm kind of concerned about that because, you know, we let permitting occur time after time again that increases the enrollment in our school district and single-family properties, um, you know, in those developments. I mean, they're happening all up and down the street in Edgewood. But to justify a multifamily development, we always have to talk about it being so much to price people out or to not impact the school district, you know, in some way. And I know we have to work in conjunction with the school district, and these things are important. But I just feel like there's different tiers of how we talk about it. And I think that we need to think about, as Counselor Alamon referenced, you know, our housing portfolio, what we have, what we offer. And I do think it's important to think about the potential displacement effects of this property if it does, uh, you know, impact surrounding Rosedale residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have a, go ahead, Ms. Paul.
So it's, it's been a good debate. I've enjoyed listening to the various sides. However, our job is to sit here and discuss the merits of R-seven. We are not here to judge what use we'd like to see on this property. That's not our choice. That's, that property owner's right. So I find it a little confusing that we're going to sit here and say, "We desire this, we desire that." We are judging it based on the merits. But what I'd like to get to, my original point, was I guess I take a little bit of umbrage to the criticism of the council and the city for its quote neglect of Rosedale. And some of the things I'd like to just point out that the city has done, especially in the last four years, we built Spring Park, which was, I think, what, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars of our budget? We found that money and didn't bat an eye to build a park. I mean, it's a beautiful park. We have spent more money on sidewalks and built, built more linear feet of sidewalks in that neighborhood than any other part of Homewood. We have invested in the Lee Center. We now have a trail plan before us that we're showing that we want to invest again in the community and, which is also highlighted on the two thousand and seven master plan. So I think it shows that people are watching. The second part of that is, um, we have a, the councils in Ward One had Rosedale Day of Service. I think a lot of people have missed out on the opportunity to get into the neighborhood. Uh, I think a lot of people stand up and have a voice when situations like this occur. I would encourage them to have a voice all the time and do it through your hands and be in the neighborhood and be a contributor to the community. Don't just show up for a committee meeting or for a rezone, especially a downzone. Be there all the time. In addition, you know, the local historic designation was dropped out of council to be handed to the Historic Preservation Committee, which they're the ones that originated. This parcel actually wouldn't be included in that local historic designation. It includes NPD properties. But I guess, you know, we, we had a lot of emails against this. We had a lot of emails in favor. One of the things that I found concerning in a lot of them was just the copy and paste nature of those emails. There, there wasn't a lot of, you know, details. It was the same email repetitive. So I guess that leads me to questions about what, you know, is going on behind those. But in the end, my point is, we should all be encouraged to stay involved in the neighborhood all the time, not just during hot topics like this.
Thank you, Mr. Wolden. Anybody else? Got some comments of my own, but-
Can we, can we do a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay.
But I'm going to make a couple of comments first.
I just wanted to make sure we could do a roll call.
No, we're going to do a roll call. No problem. I, I want to thank everyone in the community that, Andrew, you got something? You go ahead.
I, I feel like I need to say something.
It's up to you.
Everybody else at this point has. Yes, I don't want to be left out. Yeah, I mean, we've had several rezonings over the last several years since I've been on the council. Several are, you know, have been near or in Rosedale. Others have been in other parts of, of Homewood. One was right across from the Exception Foundation not that long ago. Which kind of brings up something that, you know, Barry had, had mentioned. And in that case, you know, we, uh, I felt like there was a lot of feedback from people both supporting and opposed. And ultimately, weight was given, uh, more so to those that were closer in proximity. And they were all Homewood residents voicing- they were all Homewood residents voicing, you know, for or against. But the proximity to the project or the potential rezoning was ultimately kind of where I think most people landed in terms of how they made their decision. And, you know, I think obviously, housing, being a kid myself that grew up in a single-parent home in university housing, I think, you know, it's a hard needle to thread right now. We as a community do pride ourselves on the diversity that we have, and it's not lost on me that part of that diversity is not, you know, race or gender or ethnicity, but also socioeconomics. And so there's certainly part of me that struggles with a price point like that, but I do also want to echo some of the comments that have been made tonight, that I think fortunately, in this case, what's being discussed is not, and honestly, the intended uses currently versus what could happen with the rezone. Neither one is probably very likely to impact schools and to look at... It's not something we have to weigh tonight in terms of its impact, because I think, given the price point like we talked about and the intended use of that kind of property, in fact, there's no yard and other things, would lend itself to most likely not being a property where people would live as a, you know, with a young family. But I am really struggling with, I'm just, I am really struggling right now, because I've heard people from Rosedale and honestly, a lot more people, I wish there were a lot more people here presently that, again, I feel like I've heard several people from Rosedale speak for it, but we have got some emails that people were against it, and then a lot of the feedback has come from other people outside of Rosedale. But I'll just say that, for me, I'm struggling because so much of what I've heard from Rosedale residents prior is that we don't want commercial. We don't want this commercial encroachment. And so I do, I do and am struggling with, as it's been brought up and discussed tonight, that this would be moving away from commercial. I'm not sure, I'm not a real estate agent, I don't, I don't know exactly how property values are influenced most, but I have a hard time believing that any improvement to the site would have zero impact on it, whether it's commercial or residential. I think there's, if you improve the site, I think inherently there will be an impact, you know, among that general area, period. I can't say which is more, but I just wanted to say for the record that I, you know, I'm really struggling. I've tried my best to listen to comments and concerns over the last, you know, four and a half years, and this one just has me a little bit confused based on some of the feedback in opposition to it. So I don't think it's an easy decision necessarily for anybody right now, but I just wanted to, I guess, bring up some of the concerns and the, I guess, internal turmoil that I have with making a decision on this.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. So I would like to thank everyone once again, all the residents that emailed us, that called us, that attended the meetings, that came and spoke tonight, spoke on Zoom. I think it is a fair statement, and most people have made it here, that we have gotten plenty of voices in favor and plenty of voices against, both within and outside Rosedale. And I certainly respect all of those opinions, as I know we all do, as I respect the opinions of everyone on council. This is not an easy decision for anyone, I don't think, and we, you know, I think we have, regardless of what we do here, and really, what we do here, in my opinion, is not completely connected to it, we, you know, have identified something that we probably need to continue to talk about, about Rosedale. And to the extent that we want to do that and want to be proactive, I think that's something we can, and certainly we're willing to do and should do, and continue on some of the good work that Mr. Gualtin has brought up and some of the things we've done in the past, and the trail is a good example of that, that we discussed earlier tonight. At the same time, I think we have to be cognizant of our role. You know, I started this by pointing out that, you know, what we have before us is whether or not R7 is an appropriate zoning for this property. I come back to that and use that as my prism through which this is evaluated. That's the question before us, not what can, what we would like to see there. I think everyone's right. C2 is a pretty broad zoning. It allows for a lot of things that aren't intrusive, for lack of a better word, and it allows for a lot of things that are. Unfortunately, right now, it's Zone C2, which means if someone comes and wants to do one of those non-intrusive things, they can, and that's great. But the problem is, if they want to come and do one of the other things, they don't need to come ask us for permission. They can just put it there. And as long as we leave it open like that, that they have that ability, the owner has that ability. So I do think that residential on this particular property, in my opinion, is beneficial. I will give you some of the reasons for that. I drove out to this property, I drove all around the property, I drove to everything, every road that could possibly come close to it. This property seems fairly isolated to me. There's the rock wall cliff on, across 18th Street. On the backside of it is the creek, well, is the easement, the creek, and another big cliff. And up on top of the cliff is some property and then a little bit of land before you start hitting houses. So it seems to me to be a fairly isolated property. And I think that, in my opinion, that that would, that this would, is an appropriate zoning for this property. I'll also just say this with regard to slowing down or having a voice in the process. This is the process. You know, the law sets forth a process, and it is that the owner comes and asks for a rezoning. They have done that, they've gone through the process, they've gone to the BZA, they've gone to the Planning Commission, they're now here before us. At each point along that process, there's the opportunity for the public to come and speak to it. And in addition to that, the developer had their meeting with, had an open meeting where many Rosedale community members came. But this is the process. So we have had that process, and everyone's voice has, could be heard in that process, and we've heard from many, many people, again, both for and against. So, you know, I think the process is working. I don't want to give the impression that it is not. And, you know, I think that, again, that we may need to look at this separate issue of the Rosedale community and perhaps even how property values are affected in Rosedale, and what can be done with that. I will tell you, the lawyer in me struggles with that, not because I don't think it's a good idea or that we shouldn't have it, but it, I struggle with how I tell, or how we as a city tell someone that wants to build on a property adjacent to Rosedale, "You can't build something because you're going to affect your property's, your neighbor's property value," and then tell someone down the street from me, "We're not going to put the same restriction on you," when that's going to affect my property value. The lawyer in me gets concerned about the equal protection argument there. And that doesn't mean that there's not a way around it, and maybe we need to look into that, but I do feel uncomfortable with that equal protection argument at this point. So, those are my comments, those are my thoughts. I think we've heard from everyone that wants to speak about it. So I think we are probably ready for a motion, if anyone is willing to make it.
I'd make a motion to carry 131120 over, please.
I don't think there's a motion to carry it. We wouldn't have a motion to carry it over. We could carry it over if there were no objection. I'm hearing that there's probably objection to carrying it over.
Well, okay, that's fine. My apologies, yes.
That's okay.
Well, my preference would be to carry this over. I know we followed the process, but I do feel like, you know, there's just kind of a, this is like a catalyst in future conversations, I think, and it's interrelated to what we're hoping to do, and I'd like to just, again, not that we've done anything wrong with the process, but just the additional time to continue to vet this and build consensus.
Mr. President, I would...
We will not have any of that.
Mr. President, I would...
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I feel like you get by with it a number of meetings. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I would move to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. Given that we have a motion and a second, I think that there, that's an indication that there would be objection to carrying it over, and we should, we should hear, let the motion be played out. Ms. Salter, if you will call roll.
This will be order 2793.
Correct. Counselor Gualtin?
And I'm sorry, before we do this, just a reminder, there is no unanimous consent tonight, because we, this is the second, this is, we already had the first reading last meeting, so this is a vote on the actual ordinance.
Rezone.
On the rezone, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Salter. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Vote on the rezone. Here we go. Counselor Gualtin?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
No.
Counselor Alamon?
No.
Counselor Wolverton?
No.
Counselor Sims?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Naums?
No.
Counselor Andres?
Try again, Jennifer, sorry.
Sorry, I said yes. That was a yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
It passes six to five.
All right, so that will be ordinance number 2793. All right, next item on the agenda is 141120. Public hearing opened on January 11th, 2021, and continued for consideration to rezoned property at 75 Bagby Drive from C1 Office Business Building District to MXD Mixed Use District. The applicant is Melinda Sellers of Burham Foreman, representing the owner Addison Investment LLC for use as a charter school and institutional facility. This came from, to us from the Planning Commission, who had a vote of seven to zero in favor of the rezone. Hey, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening.
All right, so the public hearing, this is the same as the last one, the public hearing is open. It remains open, so if you would just give us, you didn't give us any much information last time, since we were, you carried it over, so I guess you need to give us an idea of what we're talking about.
Yes, sir. And I think Brian has my, there we go. Brian, if we could start with Slide 1 on the PDF, or the PowerPoint presentation.
Are you Melinda Sellers?
Yes. Yes, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm Melinda Sellers with Burham Foreman, 420 North 20th Street, Birmingham.
Okay, give me just a second. That was the only one I had. Hold on.
I also emailed this around to everyone during committee meetings, so if you don't have a copy, it'll be, it's on your email, or should be.
I'm going to go ahead and start, given time. Brian, while you're pulling up the PowerPoint, because a lot of the beginning is stuff that you guys probably already have in your packet, if that's all right?
That's fine, thank you.
I represent the proposed developer, but the current owner of this property is Addison Investments. This is located in West Homewood. The current zoning is C1, and it's 75 Bagby Drive, and we're requesting to go to an MXD zoning. The property is currently vacant and has been for at least a decade that I know of. Oh, there we go. Brian, thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the next slide. I'm not sure how to do this, I don't have a clicker, so I'll just keep saying next slide, if that's all right. The potential purchaser is Ferris Murray Properties, and they are asking to rezone to MXD, and they intend to use the property for a charter school and a research professional office. And I'm going to have someone with more knowledge about that come up and explain exactly what that'll look like in just a minute. Because it is a charter school with a professional research office located within the building, as you can all see on your floor plans that President Wyatt passed out, MXD is the only zoning that I can find that works for both a school and a professional research office. Then, next slide will give us an aerial here. This, the property is outlined in black. I believe you already have this in your packet, and it is located across from the new police station. If there's any, any question about that boundary, it's right there with the zoning boundary as well. So this property only has the one building on it. Brian, if we could go maybe two slides forward. This is the current state of the building, and I've driven past there, and frankly, these pictures make it look a little better than I've seen. Certainly, I think this area is seeing improvements with the new police station, but it's been, as y'all can see, it's been a little bit of a struggle. If we could go to the next slide, there's a couple more pictures. Again, just a little more up close. And in a minute, we'll show you some pictures of what this property could look like. You guys feel free to stop me if I'm moving too fast, but I know we're all kind of ready. If we could go to the next slide. The Homewood Master Plan was adopted in 2007, and you can move on to the next slide. It called for this property to be mixed-use zoning. And there it is on the master plan, and I believe you all had this in your original packet as well, and you can see outlined in black, that's the 75 Bagby Drive, and everything going north and south being MXD. And I won't ask Brian to go back, but if you went back to the current zoning up here on the top right on Goodwin Crest, that's already MXD, and that's the Skyline Village Assisted Living. So it's already kind of moved into that direction, and then everything to the left, to the west of that is vacant property until you get to the existing office building. Moving on to the next slide. You all know what mixed use does. It would allow for this area to have more than just a school, more than just professional offices, but kind of a lot of things. Next, going on to the next slide, I discussed with, before I talk about the West Homewood Neighborhood Plan, I called the assisted living facility. We tried to reach out to all neighbors to make sure there's no opposition. I am, I would just like to say I'm unaware of any opposition from any neighbors or in the neighborhood. The assisted living, as you might expect, the lady I spoke to there was just excited to have this not be vacant. They were thrilled to, she almost didn't care what was going in, as long as something was going in. She said she raised her children in West Homewood, she was a nurse there, she was very polite, but she just was excited to see some activity here. 2007 was the master plan, but then in 2013, there was a West Homewood Neighborhood Plan adopted for all of West Homewood, and if you go through that plan, it call, it reaffirms this circle of an area for mixed-use zoning. Interestingly, it calls for a fire station there too, which I thought was, would be complimentary to what's already going on there. The plan is focused specifically on West Homewood, and it gave a plan for how to revitalize that area over the next 15 to 20 years, and called for this to be mixed-use. And now we're going to talk about, well, what are you going to do on the property? And I'm going to ask Karen to come up and discuss this with you guys, but I just want to point out that when we originally filed this application, this was a proposed use and a hope. And I know you guys, you know, at that time, we've been through a long process to get before you, and at that time, we heard a lot of, "But we really want to know what you're doing." And I just want you to hear from Karen that this is, you know, pending your approval tonight, this is not really a proposed use. This is ready to go, and we'll explain the development team and what the game plan is. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen, President Wyatt, if that's okay, to continue the applicant presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you so much for letting us speak tonight. I'm Karen Musgrove. I'm the CEO of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, and, or BAO, and we have the Magic City Wellness Center, the Magic City Acceptance Center, and now the Magic City Acceptance Academy, which is the charter school... which is the charter school that I know that most of y'all know about. We have our charter approval by the Alabama State Charter Commission, so we are ready to go. We are going to open in the fall of 2021. So this is a program of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, the Acceptance Academy. And Dr. Mike Wilson, who is here tonight, is our principal, and you may know him as the Alabama School Principal of the Year last year, and you'll be able to hear from him. It'll be grades six through 12. We're going to have 300 to 450 students. And like I said, we're opening in the fall of 2021. And our mission for the Acceptance Academy is to facilitate a community in which all learners are empowered to embrace education, achieve individual success, and take ownership of their future in a safe LGBTQ-affirming learning environment. So we really are looking for students who have failed out of school, who have dropped out of school, who are not thriving in school, and bring them into this environment where we're going to have mentorships. They're going to learn differently, and we really just want to look at education in a different way. So that is who we're targeting through this process. At Birmingham AIDS Outreach, about a year ago, we started the Magic City Research Institute. We were doing a lot of different research, research with data and in collaboration with a lot of different organizations. And yeah, let's say we can forward the slide. And we realized that through the organization, we had a lot of data, and we had, we had information that needed to be published, that could help public health. And Dr. Emma Kay is now the Director of the Magic City Research Institute, and you'll hear from her as well tonight. But it is led by Dr. Kay, myself, and Josh Bruce at Birmingham AIDS Outreach. And then we also collaborate with UAB, and our staff is Dr. Scott Beatty and Dr. Emma Kay. So we're looking at research from a variety of perspectives. But we're doing such a great job that we have actually outgrown the space. So Birmingham AIDS Outreach has three buildings on 32nd Street, and we are completely out of space. So with the charter school and the space that we're talking about tonight, we're going to actually integrate some professional office space for my research team to have a place. So what does charter schools and public health have to do with each other, and it's everything? The students will be able to have mentors with my research staff. They'll actually be able to see individuals working, and what is research, and it's just all connected. The Acceptance Center, the Wellness Center, HIV programs, and now the charter school is all connected. And it really is a place for me to put my research staff in a professional environment. Currently, we have five projects, funded projects with UAB, the University of Columbia, University of Denver, and the University of Pittsburgh. Our core is to gather, evaluate, and publish data relevant to health disparities and health behaviors, specifically COVID right now. There's a lot of stuff that we're about to start doing with COVID, but our, we kind of exist inside of HIV, barriers to care, retention in medical care, poverty, food disparities, and social norms. Pending funding, which Dr. Kay is going to talk about, is through the CDC, the NIH, and HERSA, UAB, and the University of Columbia. And so, again, we're proposing that this is where I put my researchers. And so, I think you're really going to enjoy hearing Dr. Wilson and Dr. Kay talk about the project, but I really just wanted you to see kind of overall what the Magic City Research Institute is about, and how it's all connected to the charter school. And the next photograph is actually a rendering of what our beautiful building is going to look like. So as we've talked about, this building has been empty for many years, and just looking at the renderings is just so inspiring. So here's our thought, and then the next, the next slide is an aerial view, and then the next slide. So here are the three floors. The floor on the bottom, of course, is the entrance floor, which is where the school lunchroom will be, a lot of the classrooms, the cafeteria area. But it's the second and third floor, so, you know, sixth through 12th grade, we're going to have students on all three floors. But the light green areas are the, are the locations where these professional office spaces are going to be. So you can see how the students are actually going to be integrated into the professional office space, and then in return, the office space will be integrated in with the students. So this is how we're going to make it work and use all three floors of this amazing building. So I'm going to turn it back over, and then I'll come back for questions at the end.
Well.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. So this is the development team, just in case you're wondering who all will be working on redoing this site. And then, I mentioned the neighborhood support. My phone call, we've received written support from 85 Bagby and 300 Goodwin Crest, have both emailed to us their written support of the project. And then I listed out, of course, the Alabama Charter School Commission, who issued the charter, the Board of Directors of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, Magic City Acceptance Academy. And with that, I will leave it to you all for questions. I'm available for questions, so is Karen, if you have any. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Let me see if there's anyone else to speak for or against this. I can't get caught up.
Well, good evening, everyone. So I'm Mike Wilson. I am the founding principal of the Magic City Acceptance Academy, and I'm very honored to have this opportunity to stand before you as hopefully you approve our request for zoning for MCIA. Your approval tonight gives us the final big hurdle, and we've been through some hurdles for our school. But it's the final big hurdle in the creation of this, this wonderful, this diverse, this inclusive learning space that will be anchored in curriculum, that speaks to students' interests and community needs. I've been in education for 29 years, all in Birmingham City, and 21 of those years as a school principal, my last 14 at Glen Iris Elementary, just over the hill. And I'm well aware of the number of students who are left out for a variety of reasons. And a lot of those reasons are because they do not fit into the model of the cultural norm of the learning environments that they're in. I know it because I've seen it, but I know it because I was one of those students. I know about being bullied, not fitting in, being left out of social gatherings, and the daily thoughts that those things produce in the mind of an adolescent. Suicide ideation becomes a norm in your life. And unless you find that affirming space that you need, that ideation becomes a tragedy. So we're creating a culture that's based on inclusivity, that's based on the ideas of social and restorative justice, and with a curriculum that is grounded in social and emotional learning, with complete wraparound services that meet the needs of the students, not only academically, but services that benefit the whole child, which is the only way to reengage many of the children who have been disengaged from the current educational systems. Counsel, please help us make history tonight with your vote. History in Homewood, history in Jefferson County, history in Alabama, and in fact, history in the United States. The creation of this outside-the-box learning space will have the capacity, not only to enrich lives, but to save lives, and to affirm each student's value, motivating them to a path that leads to the feeling of having a place in the greater society in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, any, yeah, come on up. And if you will, just sign in and give us your name and address, please.
I'm with the Academy.
Okay.
What's your name? Emma Kay.
Emma Kay?
Mm-hmm. So, hi, everyone. You may have heard my name mentioned in the presentation. I'm Dr. Emma Kay. I'm the Director of the Magic City Research Institute, and this is BAO's Collaborative Research Wing. So it's where research and community programs really come to life. At this institute, we are promoted, we're dedicated to promoting a real, community-centered, public health-focused approach to research, which marries community expertise with academic expertise, which is really quite a rare thing. As you may have heard, Dr. Musgrove, Karen Musgrove, mentioned just a few of our programs, but we are rapidly growing by leaps and bounds. We are in desperate need of additional research space to collect data and analyze data and hire really energetic research staff to help us continue to move forward. So in brief, I will list just a couple of the projects that Dr. Musgrove didn't go over. We've got a new R01 funded by the NIH, which looks at community health worker intervention for people living with HIV. We've had, we have several grants that focus on homelessness and HIV, and explicitly increasing HIV testing and linkage to care and ancillary services for people living with HIV. We have several app-based programs funded through Columbia University, which use mobile apps to increase public health messages to youth, which interfaces really nicely with our new school. We also have a new grant focused on increasing healthcare access and quality of, of care to LGBTQ people living in the state. We also have several grants under review. We have an R01, which will look at increasing access to care for people who use drugs. We have one that will also increase prep use for at-risk young black men. And so, these are just a few of our, of our programs, which have all, by the way, happened within less than one year. So we are in desperate need of professional space to continue our really exciting research programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else? And Brian, do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to speak to this?
I don't know. Do we? If you would like to speak to this, you can put your name in the chat or raise your hand.
Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mr. Kendrick, if you would give us a first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Homewood. Whereas the Planning Commission and the city has approved and recommended the city council, as the property described herein, be changed from its current zoning classification, Homewood C1 Office Building District, zoning district, and be rezoned to an MXD Mixed Use District. Whereas the council has determined it be necessary to set a public hearing for tonight, January 11th, well, excuse me, it was previously set for January 11th, as Director Clerk to give notice thereof. Therefore, be it ordained as follows, that the following described property, described in Exhibit A, being more particularly described as 75 Bagby Drive, be in the same as hereby taken out of C1 Zoning District and rezoned to the city of Homewood MXD Zoning District, subject to the terms and provisions of the development plan attached as Exhibit B and approved by the city council immediately preceding adoption of this ordinance, which development plan is incorporated into and becomes a part of this ordinance. Section 2, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance, the uses permitted in MXD, as well as those provisions set out in paragraph 1 above, shall control the uses of the property. Section 3, that January 11th, 6 o'clock PM, was the time and place for which the public hearing was set and scheduled, and notice of the same was given as provided by law by the city clerk. Section 5, any part of provision of ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court, county jurisdiction, all of the parts or provisions shall remain in full force and effect, and this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council, approved by the mayor, or otherwise becoming law. Because this is an MXD, before you can take action on this zoning ordinance, you would have to approve the final, the development plan, which is attached as Exhibit E, is a prerequisite to voting on the zoning ordinance.
So we have to vote on the development plan first?
Yes, it's just a vote, a voice vote, because the zoning, the development plan attached as Exhibit B is incorporated into the ordinance.
And that vote does not require a resolution, correct?
No, sir.
All right. So, and I should have explained this before, but just so everyone understands, we did, even though this public hearing was carried over, opened and carried over, we did not have the first reading on the 11th, and that's why we had a reading of this one and not the previous one. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood. So what we've got in front of us is, again, an owner request for a rezoning, this time from C1 to MXD, the question being whether or not this property is appropriate for MXD. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll comment. President Wyatt?
Yep.
I just want to also say that this passed unanimously at the Planning Commission level, and I want to thank the applicant for such a thorough presentation, or really, it sounds like such a fantastic opportunity for West Homewood. The thought of that property being used in that way with that number of people is just wonderful. And that was a whole intent of us building out to the west of our city, adding the Public Safety Center out there, and just with the eye on, looking at, you know, neat and unique opportunities moving west, and this absolutely fits that bill. And if you're, are you ready for a motion or are you taking more comments?
Let me make sure there are no more comments or questions. Mr. Alamon?
As a War II counselor, I'm really excited about this project. I work right in the area, and the ability to develop it and also bring about positive change in our state. I couldn't be happier about this project.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say to the folks from the Academy that I appreciate you bringing forward the explanation of why this is mixed use, because that's important for us to consider when we're, you know, thinking about a rezoning, and why you're asking for what you are. And you explained that thoroughly. I understand about the need for having almost like a residential professional on staff in those professional pods, and that just helped bring it all together for us, considering the questions we had last time.
All right. Anybody else? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the development plan. So.
I've moved to approve the development plan.
We'll give it, you said it first. What, Mr. Alamon? And a second from Ms. Andres. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, so the development plan is approved.
He said it was Alamon, Andres.
Correct. 11 to 0.
Did he close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay.
All right, so now I would entertain a, we need to do unanimous consent since the first reading was tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent. So moved. Motion by Mr. Walton, second by Ms. Smith. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Salter.
Counselor Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is also 11 to 0, and that will be ordinance 2794. All right. Next item is 151120. Public hearing opened on January 11th, 2021, and continued for consideration to rezone property at 55 and 65 Bagby Drive from C5 to MXD. brought to us by Ms. Sellers. My understanding is that this item is to be dropped. Is that correct?
Yes. Do I need to clear anything?
No, not, not as long as you agree that, unless anything has changed.
No, my, my client would just like for me to explain that they have withdrawn the application because the proposed use that I put forward, we found is probably permitted under the current C5. And so if that use, for some reason, doesn't materialize, then I may be back before you on 5565. We would really like to get that occupied, so I just didn't want it to be a surprise. If I do come back.
No, my, my client would just like for me to explain that they have withdrawn the application because the proposed use that I put forward, we found is probably permitted under the current C5. And so if that use, for some reason, doesn't materialize, then I may be back before you on 5565. We would really like to get that occupied, so I just didn't want it to be a surprise if I do come back before you, but for now, we'd like to withdraw that application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to drop.
So moved.
Second. Wait, I'm sorry. I don't know who did it first. It was Mr. Jones, and a second from Mr. Harden. All right, all in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Mr. Kendrick, I forgot to close the public hearing, don't I?
Right.
Okay, let me close the public hearing first. Now we'll have a motion from Mr. Jones, and a second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is dropped. Thank you, Ms. Sellers. All right, next item, 060121. Public hearing set for February 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM. For consideration, a petition to vacate a strip of Park Ridge Drive next to Our Lady of Sorrow's parking lot. That public hearing is set for the 22nd, so we will just handle that then. All right, next item is 021020. Bid opening held on January 4th, 2021, at 5:00 PM for City Communications. We carried that over, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The next one is actually 030121, which is the kitchen appliances.
I apologize, I missed that one when I was marking mine out. Okay, 030121. Request for consideration to declare kitchen appliances from the old police department building surplus, brought to us by Chief Ross, and we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight at 5:20 and voted five to zero for approval.
All right.
Can I speak to one thing about that?
You can.
The chief asked to be donated to a certain charity. Unfortunately, we can't donate municipal property. I'll be glad to make a bid and donate myself, but somebody's got to buy it.
So as a, as a city, all we can do is declare a surplus?
And dispose of it as the law permits.
Right. And then if someone buys it and happens to donate it at that point?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't have the authority to donate municipal property.
Got it, okay. Thank you for that clarification, appreciate it. Yeah, would you give us the first reading, please?
Yes, sir. Hereby established and declared that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, and therefore declared surplus property. Sections, property is described as, as identified as Exhibit A, kitchen furniture. Section two, the mayor and clerk be hereby authorized and directed to dispose of the property as permitted by law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments?
No, but I would move for unanimous consent.
Motion by Ms. Smith. We have second, second by Ms. Nels. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andress?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that passes eleven to zero. I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andress. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andress?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes, all right.
It's 2795.
So that'll be, that's eleven to zero, it'll be ordinance 2795. All right, next item is 040121. Request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Tyler Technologies for annual subscription to crew force mobile data terminal software, brought to us by Chief Hill and Battalion Chief Broadhead. And again, a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero for approval. This is a CAD upgrade.
All right. Any motion from Finance, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is eleven to zero, and that somehow is our first resolution of the night? 2115. All right, next item, 050121. Request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Pitney Bowes for new postage machine at the Court Department in the Public Safety Building, brought to us by John Morgan, Municipal Court Administrator. Again, a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero for approval.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And also passes eleven to zero, and that'll be 2116. Next item is 110820. Request for consideration for additional street lighting and to address traffic concerns in Forest Brook Drive and Del Chris, brought to us by Council Wolverton and Randy Hambley. A report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltney. Sorry, my apologies. So we are referring this item to the Finance Committee. Council Wolverton has identified the streetlights and the poles, and those items need to be, have a cost associated with them, brought to Finance Committee for approval. Fantastic, so that will go to Finance.
Yeah, Randy said he would get those numbers.
Great, fantastic, and we'll see that in Finance next week. All right, and I believe that does it for the old business agenda, which brings us to the committee referral agenda.
And it says amended table of the.
Oh, thank you. And I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended committee referral agenda. So moved. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eleven to zero as well. All right, which brings us to other new business. 140121. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers, vouchers for period of January 12, 2021 through January 25, 2021, brought to us by Robert Brigitte, Finance Director, Assistant City Clerk, and Melody Salter, City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. Ms. Smith, is it still yours?
Oh, yes, it is.
It's been here for a while.
Yeah. Just always count on me for the next quarter. I will say, it makes a big difference when you're doing a run that is two weeks as opposed to more than a month and a half. So it was way easier today.
That's why we're not escaping a three run right now. That would have been great.
But it was, everything was in line, I had a few questions. Robert, as always, answered them easily and to my satisfaction, so I would move that we paid vouchers for that period of January 12 through January 25.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's all right. All right, that's eleven to zero, and that is 2117?
Yes, sir.
2117. Which brings us to the end of the agenda. I don't know if the mayor is behind there or not, because I can't see him. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments tonight?
About an hour's worth.
Take this off for a second. It's a long night for everybody with, with things like, what was before you tonight? They're, they're always difficult. It's been rare that you see a six-five vote, especially over the last eight years. It's just, it's something that is tough to deal with. But I know every one of you put a lot of thought into it, and that's the most appreciative thing that I can say. It is, it is, zoning is always a, it's just an emotional thing. And you guys, I believe, did a great job, but, but I want you to understand that the biggest things are to be aware. One is to be aware of things that have been done, like Mr. Waltney pointed out. Be aware of the things that still need to be done, which are the things that a lot of other people pointed out. And there, it was mentioned a couple times, not only from up here, but from on Zoom and in some of the emails that everybody received today, and the fact of regardless of what tonight's outcome was, here's what we need to do moving forward. And that's what needs to happen. And that's what needs to happen, and that's, I know, I took a meeting with Ms. Gier this week, or last week, excuse me, along with one of the Rosedale neighbors, took a phone call from one today, and that's, that's what they're looking for, is the continued help, the continued work inside of the Rosedale community that Mr. Waltney talked about earlier. That continued work and effort, that's what they want. Okay, so just know that, that's incredibly important, and I think you guys are doing a great job. The only other thing I have to say, Mr. President, is I want to announce the movement of Battalion Chief Brandon Broadhead to the Planning Commission to replace Chief Nick Hill. As you know, Chief has a lot on his plate, so this is, this is one less thing that, that he needs to deal with, so I would, would like to go ahead and make that a part of the minutes, Ms. Salter. And there are going to be, I've heard from several of you guys, I've heard from several people in the, in the community as well, there are several spots that are going to be open on the Planning Commission, or actually are open now due to expired terms, which I will be filling as soon as possible. So if you have anybody that's, that's interested, I know I've heard from most everybody already, but if you have any more, please feel free to, just tell them to email me. It's probably the best way to do it, so. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and thank, thank you for letting me do the announcements of the employee and firefighter and police.
And while you're standing there, thank you for the State of the City address. We appreciate that very much. Thought you did a wonderful job and appreciate all the information. It's always good to hear it.
Yeah, that was a, that was a first. I enjoyed it. Being from Zoom was a little different.
I was about to say, you do it from Zoom.
Yeah, so maybe I'll be a little bit, a little bit more prepared next year when I have to stand, fingers crossed, standing in front of everybody, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Mr. Waltney?
You stole my comment. I was going to congratulate the mayor on a excellent State of the City address and our city employees that won, but not just the city employees that won, all the city employees each day that, that work their heart out to, to serve our neighbors, to serve our community, to do good things for us that we don't even really realize. They're all here with a good spirit, so I appreciate them. Otherwise, I have no other comments besides setting Public Safety for... How long does Finance need?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, so we'll set Public Safety for 5:30. How long do you need? I need fifteen, no, I need thirty minutes this time. Okay, I'm sorry. February 1st. My apologies, I should have included the date.
I'll just verify. The President's statement comes, so we'll have to move it next.
All right, it's endless.
All right, thank you, Mr. Waltney. Ms. Gier?
Yes, I'd like to thank JJ for helping me with some resident issues over the last few weeks, and hopefully we can get to the bottom of some of those things. And also, thanks Andy for sending out some updates about leaf collection. I know we're behind in that area, and I have a lot of neighbors calling. So if we get any updates, new schedules online about the vacuum pickup, I'd love to be made aware of that. That's it, thanks a lot, everybody.
You know, Ms. Gier, that we got a COVID issue there, I think.
I do know, I've heard about that, yeah. But still, I think if we could keep our schedule updated, that might help us out.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, you know, I just want to say that it was interesting, right, being on the short end of a six-five vote, but I just want to say I appreciate all my fellow councilors in that we can disagree and still move on and try to do the best for the city. And we follow that up with also approving MCIA, so it's just, it's how it goes sometimes. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve, and I'm also grateful for how many residents spoke up today. And I promise just to do my best job to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Sorry. I am fully vaccinated now, so as of last Wednesday. So hopefully that, yeah. Hopefully that'll help, you know, one step at a time. I'm excited to see some of, some of that rolling out. I know Alabama had been struggling as a state in terms of getting out, getting vaccines in arms and moving forward, but I believe we're picking up some momentum from, from what I saw, and I appreciate the leadership of Dr. Wilson and all the other health officials in the state. I know as those started to come in, he was working his tail off trying to make sure that everybody was accounted for, not just the big hospitals and medical facilities that are well-known, but all the smaller places too, so. And I just, I wanted to, I wanted to make just a quick comment about donating blood, so my wife has been doing it fairly consistently. And she went to OLS yesterday, she had a, she had an appointment set up, went in, and I think, you know, donating blood is always something that is in need, but I think especially given the current health climate, it's in even stronger need. And after she, she thankfully had an early appointment, so I was able to just drop in. And that's kind of the hard part, is making sure we can both get in sometimes. And there's something that I was unfamiliar with, which is called Power Red Donation, which is basically two units of red blood in one donation cycle. And essentially, they, or they send, send your blood through a centrifuge and pull plasma out, and put your plasma back in with saline. So you actually don't lose blood volume like you would with a normal donation. So I just want to encourage everybody to know what blood type they have and, and to consider donating in the future. We went to OLS, apparently they run a blood drive every two months. And so it's, it's needed. I know a lot of people don't like needles, but, but it's definitely, it's definitely needed, and especially in this, in this current climate that we're in, so. Other than that, I look forward to seeing what happens with the Super Bowl, and, you know, I'm excited to, excited to just see some, some signs of normalcy kind of coming back, and we're appreciative of everybody's time here. And, and as others have indicated, I know we're not always going to see eye to eye, just like we don't with friends or family members sometimes. But I do want to say that I, I'm tired of people villainizing others for their opinion, one way or the other. And I think people that do so behind a keyboard need to show up. And I don't, I don't see a lot of the names, I see some, but I don't see most of the names that are on the attack for people that are up here making decisions. And, you know, I just think it's cowardly, quite honest, and, and I appreciate, I saw some thread, I don't know in what capacity it was, but Nick had, had basically spoken to that, to that point, and just said, look, we're all human beings, we, you know, we all have opinions. Yes, they can be influenced by different things, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're all here, you know, for the common good, and it does no good to sit there and just attack people. So in light of tonight's votes, you know, I think that that's an important message. And I, you know, sincerely hope that there are some people still on Zoom call listening in, because, you know, I think part of being here is being able to respect differing opinions, so.
Are you saying how it works?
I thankfully don't think I need to unless ceasefire has come back and... Okay. So do you think I need to set it, or no? Will we have something decided by next Monday? No.
I don't think so.
Probably not, okay.
I think you can hold off one more time.
We can hold, hold for one more week, or one more meeting, I guess?
Yep.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. Just one thing I want to reference. Really excited about Phase Two of Greenspring's revitalization project, currently being open for bid. That's going to close on February 2nd, and, you know, if you're, if anyone's out there interested in submitting for that project, it's, you know, the criteria is online, and there's additional detail about how to look at those plans to submit a bid for that. It's a fairly significant portion of the project. I think it's going to be over a million dollars for this Phase Two segment, so really hope that we get, you know, the lowest, best offer. So, so bid away. But really excited about that going forward. So, so bid away. But really excited about that going forward. And just wanted to, you know, very in brief, again, we, we weren't, you know, we didn't vote in alignment, but I think we're all on the same page in trying to do what's the best for the city. You know, I'm new, and I value public input, and I value, you know, the discussion with my fellow counselors. A lot of this, you know, I listen to. And then, you know, we have this discussion in, in the public realm. And so sometimes that hopefully is always respectful and not messy. And I hope everybody feels the same way tonight, because I'm, I'm really just, you know, up here doing my best, and know y'all are too, and thanks for that.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor for State of the City. I thought it was very informative. I'm always going to be a little cautionary in terms of, you know, we were able to do the employee bonuses, but, I mean, we, we really need to watch our expenses. And, and I think we're, we're on the road to doing that. So we just need to do everything we can to kind of rein, rein that in during this time when we get out of this, and hopefully some of our revenues will come up. But sales tax is still looking good. Finance will be at five o'clock. And we're down to one car in our family. So thank you to my wife, Sharon, for coming to pick me up.
Thank you, Sharon.
So that's all I have.
Does she stay the whole meeting?
No.
Miss Smith?
I'll set special issues for six. And did you say you needed thirty minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So six o'clock for special issues. And yes, congratulations to Patrick. I know it must be stressful to not only do your first State of the City address, but do it on Zoom and have to deal with technological issues as well as everything else that you have to face when you're doing Zoom. But I think you did a great job. I think you gave a really honest outlook on what the city, where we are, but also some really beautiful glimmers of hope. So I think that's what we're all looking for at this point. And that's it.
How long will you need?
Uh, just fifteen.
Okay. Ms. Nels?
I'm good for tonight, but thanks, everybody. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Andress?
I did not hear what Counselor Smith said she needed timewise.
Just fifteen minutes?
Just fifteen minutes.
So you're at six fifteen?
Okay. So I'll go ahead and set P and B for six fifteen. And I wanted to also mention that, yeah, our Public Works Department is just about all out right now, either quarantined or contact traced. So just be patient with them as far as sidewalk repairs go and as far as the leaf truck goes. I want to mention that over in Ward Five, we've got the water works coming through. It is about to be another mess with our utilities. But they are doing some sampling around, particularly for some reason where John and I live. Counselor Harden and I both are kind of surrounded by all this firework and all the Verizon work, and now all the water works is coming through. So just heads up on all that. And I'll do my best to keep everybody updated with the newsletter, trying to get that out at least once a week. On today's Unified Command Call, the big topic of discussion was, as Counselor Wolverton mentioned, vaccine supply. We have over a hundred and ten thousand requests that have come through the system, including twenty-two thousand requests in 1B and eighteen thousand requests in 1C. But they're still trying to finish out 1A, which is seventy-five plus, as well as any public responders, first responders in medical that have yet to get their vaccine. The promised Hoover Met location will not be able to open this week because they do not have any supply. The good news is that the numbers are going down. They're still high. But we are averaging three hundred new cases a day. That's down, but still high. And we have four hundred and eighty-five in the hospital. That's down from six hundred. We have a hundred and thirty-one on ventilators, one ninety-nine in the ICU, and we had ten deaths yesterday. So still not great. The good news is that the two-on-one feeding number is receiving fewer calls, and so that need is, is lessening somewhat, which is good news. So we do seem to be making progress, and I will keep you posted on next week's call. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
I want to thank the mayor for his brevity on the State of the City. We were out of there by one o'clock, and for me personally, that was a record. So I appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harden. All right. I, once again, thank you to the mayor for the State of the City. Thank you to our employees that won City Employee of the Year or were awarded that, and to all our city employees for all that they do, especially during these times of COVID. And lastly, I just want to reiterate what many people have already said, which is, you know, we're not always going to agree, and we're not always going to have eleven to zero votes, and that's, that's okay. That's not a bad thing. I know, as all of you do, that everyone up here is making decisions based on what they think is in the best interest of the city and what is best for the city. We may have different opinions about what that is, but we're all coming at it with good motivations. And, and if we have a disagreement, that, that's okay. I appreciate all of the comments that, again, that the public made, that the public sent to us. But what I really appreciate is that everyone handled it respectfully. Everyone respected each other's opinions. Like I said, we don't have to always agree, but we do have to always respect each other and respect what, what each other think and what we say. And as long as we do that, we will serve this city well. So thank you to all of you for doing that. And with that, we will be adjourned.